Good evening. Welcome to the November tenth Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. I apologize for being a couple of minutes late. Thanks for bearing with me, but let's get started with calling the meeting to order and rising for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Before we enter our moment of silence this evening, first, Jack, nice to see you back. Good to see you back with us. I do want to bring to your attention, in case you're not aware, our former mayor, Ray Sturza, he had a heart attack about two weeks ago and is still recovering. In fact, I was trying to get an update to see if he's been released. Bob, do you know, is he, is he home now?
He's home.
Okay. And welcome, Commissioner Woodard.
He came home on Saturday.
Okay.
He's still weak and he's on oxygen.
Yeah. So you guys will please keep him in your thoughts and prayers and anyone who has an opportunity to drop a line to him or send a card or visit, I know it would be much appreciated. And one final thing, of course, we're on the eve of Veterans Day, a day tomorrow to celebrate and recognize all of those who have served and continue to serve in our armed forces. And with that, I would like for you to think of them as well as we go into our moment of silence, please. Thank you. And you may notice Commissioner Reubadon is not with us tonight. She is not feeling well this evening. Poor thing, she's been battling some really bad migraines, so we certainly wish her well and hope she'll be back with us soon. With that, as far as the agenda, the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. This takes us to the first time that's set aside this evening for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to address the board on any topic, to please do so. We do ask that if you're speaking as an individual to limit your comments to three minutes, and if you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would try to keep those comments to five minutes, please. We did have a sign up sheet, we'll go from that first, but if you didn't sign up, that's okay, we'll still give you an opportunity. First, we'll welcome Howard Kimball to the podium, please. And when you do go to the podium, if you would please identify yourself by name and address, that would be great. Welcome, Howard.
I'm Howard Kimball, I live at 802 West Sportsman Drive in Kill Devil Hills. I just want to talk a little bit about the FAR. Back when I was on the planning board, we spent a lot of time on the, on the FAR. And, and now I understand that the planning board has sent a recommendation of point four instead of point six, with a possibility of four point five with some setbacks, or point five with right of way. I, I hope that you guys approve this tonight, but in past experience, dealing with the developers on, on the planning board, what we will end up with is point four, because in, in the past, they have been very unwilling to negotiate anything on, on the setbacks or right of ways through the property. So I just ask that this, that this board goes along with the planning board's recommendation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Howard.
Thanks, Howard.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Jerry? Based on those of you in the audience, you probably know what the FAR is, I think most of you do, but in case anyone's listening and doesn't know what Howard was referencing, floor area ratio, or the acronym FAR. Welcome, Jerry.
Thank you. My name's Jerry Fralik, I live at 414 Wallace Street in Kill Devil Hills. I didn't plan it this way, but I noticed tonight you got a couple of items on beach and on the use of the beach. What I'm concerned about is the fact that I, and I talked to Mike before, sometime around 2016, we're going to be starting putting money on the beach in terms of beach nourishment. And I've been up here before for, for the same reasons, and I think that the way you go down, if we're gonna, if we're gonna nourish the beach and we're gonna spend that much money on it, then I think we ought to prohibit driving. I've been arguing that for several years, and if you have any doubts about it, you go down there and you take a look and you try to take a walk, and you better wear your hiking shoes, because you're gonna do more mountain climbing over a foot and a half furrows than you're gonna be doing walking. It's the only beach on southern shores, don't allow driving, Kitty Hawk doesn't allow it, there's a minimum fee in Nag's Head, and of course, the State Department down in the Hatteras area charges a fee. I don't want to charge a fee, I don't, I think we just need to say no to this. They, the trucks that get out there after dark, going around and doing donut holes or whatever it is that they call it, and they're just tearing it up, and people can't walk on it comfortably. And then if we're gonna be nursing it, we ought not to be spending money on one thing and letting it be torn up the next time. Thanks.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Okay, all right. I don't see any other hands. We will move on then to response to public comment. And Howard, I guess, do you mind, we'll just wait and take this up under new business number one?
That's fine.
Okay. But thanks for sharing your comments with us, unless anyone has something to address now? With Howard, okay.
Yeah.
And Jerry, about beach driving, Jerry did bring, has brought this up before. You know, we said we certainly would consider that request at the time that we're talking about, beach nourishment, and he's right, based on all timelines, we'll be putting sand on, hopefully, March of 2016, hopefully when we'll start putting some sand on the beach, so at some point, does the board want to have like a formal discussion on this, or what's the, what's your comments?
Is this something we'll talk about now, or we want to put on an agenda sometime in the future?
Put it on an agenda.
I'd be willing to talk about it. I felt like Jerry, I'm not sure as far, maybe to go as far as outlawing, depending on how everybody else feels, but I think we should have some, especially now, we should look at it again, I think.
Well, let's schedule this to be an agenda item at an upcoming meeting. That'd be great, and that way, between now then, Debbie recommended first of the year, between now and first of the year, solicit any other input, feedback, and then we'll take this up in January then. Okay. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on then to new business. We have several items this evening under new business. The first is to, excuse me, to schedule a public hearing on the recommended amendment to Chapter 153 zoning for the floor area ratio, the FAR. This would be an amendment to Section 153.100D. The proposed amendment is to lower the current floor area ratio in the ocean impact residential zone. And Greg, would you mind doing an introduction for us, please?
Not at all.
Thank you.
To explain what floor area ratio is and how we got to where we are, I think, I'll take just a moment. Basically, what you have, the floor area ratio is the size of the heated building divided by the lot size, and that gives you a ratio. And if you heard Mr. Kimball talking about the different numbers, currently, it's at point six. And the planning board, through discussion with Community Appearance Commission and direction of this board, took up the issue of floor area ratio again. And what they, what came out of the planning board discussion was very good. I think there was at least two or three meetings, and there was some good conversation about what it should be and what our community might end up looking like if it was left the same or changed. And the outcome of those meetings were, what was discussed earlier, is that if you, they want to recommend having a public hearing to lower the floor area ratio to point four with following exceptions, and one would be, you could increase, if you increase the minimum side yard setbacks by two feet on either side, the floor area ratio could be up to point four five, and if you wanted to go to point five zero, you would have a obligation to record a five-foot unimproved public access easement. So that's where the planning board voted to bring this language to public hearing, and Mayor, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great. Thank you very much. Open the floor for discussion.
Looks good to me. Thank you.
Did you want to, did you have a conversation with Duke Garrity?
I did.
Okay. Do you mind sharing, I sent an email out, but just for the purpose of the folks here with us and...
Yeah, I spoke to him about this, and he went back to his, was it the...
Home builders.
Home builders, yeah. And they all discussed about it, and I guess they spoke with Skip Jones, and they thought this was a pretty good idea, it was pretty fair, you're reducing the floor area ratio, but you get some concessions if you, you know, make some setbacks and provide a unimproved easement for beach access. So I mean, I thought it was pretty good, but looked for a second opinion, and they all thought it looked good, too.
Right, Mary. Okay. Any other comments?
When it was originally proposed at point three, I certainly wasn't in support. I like the idea now. I had a question on, to get to the concessions where you can do the five-foot, I mean, we're emphasizing the word unimproved, is the, what's, what's possible to happen in that five-foot zone?
Well, I'm not exactly sure why it was recommended as unimproved, but there was some discussion at the planning board, and as I understand, that was added at the last minute. And what could be done would be a footpath, obviously, and I think maybe the idea is we're not going to require a five-foot paved footpath, but there's easements going to be there, and maybe they want to put a boardwalk, maybe they want to put a concrete sidewalk, or maybe they just want to let it, you know, just walk through the property. But, you know, I, Mayor, if I was at the meeting, she might be able to shed a little more light on exactly what, what the thought process was, if you need more.
I mean, I, I was there as well. I mean, I, my understanding was it was left as unimproved, so that the developer wouldn't feel obligated to do anything, but I wasn't sure if that meant that they couldn't do or we wouldn't do as a town necessarily do an access through it. So it's kind of an open item, or...
I would say so. Mayor's going to the microphone. I was on vacation, so I missed that meeting, sorry to say.
I'm sure Steve will correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think you need the word unimproved in the amendment. I think that it's not a substantial change, and if you don't require it to be an improved access, then the, unimproved is inferred, and it allows them to do what they want with the five-foot easement, or allow maybe the neighbors across the street to improve it. So I don't, I don't know that the, that particular word is necessary.
Okay.
And, but it was, it was part of the planning board's discussion, like Greg said, because they didn't want the developer to feel like they had to make a town-wide beach access type facility within the easement.
Under this setup, would, the town wouldn't be precluded from improving it, is I correct? The town could put a boardwalk at the town one and two, for instance?
I would say with the word unimproved in there, that you could not improve it.
That's what I'm afraid of. So it would kind of relieve the builder of obligation, but it might prevent others from being able to, to do something.
So if it just took that word out, then if we wanted to do a boardwalk there, we could, correct? Is that...
We'd have to get, right, we'd have to get permission from, we don't own the property. Well, that's certainly something we could suggest amending before the public hearing, changing that language, and then scheduling a public hearing with that word removed.
Yeah. Other than that, I mean, I tend to agree with Howard that the, that the easements might not go, but I like the fact that they're there as an option. I mean, especially the, the two feet, that's not, I don't think that's a huge impact to get up to point four five, but, so I like the fact that there's some, some flexibility for the, for the developers, and that was all I had.
Right. Mike?
No, that's all I had.
Okay. All right. Well, what's before us tonight is to schedule a public hearing. The recommendation is to schedule a public hearing, which would be for Monday, December eighth at 5:30. Is there a motion in order to do so?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay.
Question for clarification, please. Is that with the word unimproved, or is that without the word unimproved?
Was there consensus to remove the word unimproved?
I think so. It was for me.
There were, yes.
Thank you.
No, thanks for the clarification. Okay. Next is item number two, under new business, there's two items there. The first item is personal items left on the beach. If you all recall, this became a rather big issue for us, kind of the middle of the season into the last, later part of the season, with quite a few complaints from property owners, residents, and even vacationers, about the amount of items left on the beach overnight. Not only was this an item here in our town, it was being experienced kind of Outer Banks wide. Staff implemented a tagging system in August, or actually, I guess it was in July, started tagging items left on the beach, and they've documented the totals of items left on the beach prior to the tagging campaign and then after, and we did see a reduction in personal items left after that campaign was initiated. The notes that were in our packet, Nag's Head has, has addressed this issue, they have actually adopted an ordinance to declare things left after 8:00 PM and before say, 7:00 AM as litter, those items are litter, so they could remove those. And they actually went ahead and adopted their ordinance, they're gonna, I guess, do an awareness campaign this coming summer, and then, I guess, hold people accountable in the 2016 season. So we had asked for staff to put this back on our agenda, so we could talk about what would our plans be going into this next season. Staff looked at what's happening around us, they looked at what's, what happened with the success of the tagging campaign, and the recommendation at this time is to continue the tagging campaign unless we find that that's not being effective, and if then staff needed more teeth in something, then the recommendation is at that time to look at an ordinance. Debbie, anything that I left out that you may want to add?
No, ma'am.
So it's really up for discussion tonight as to what's the pleasure of the board, to continue with a tagging-only campaign, or to move into something more restrictive with some additional accountability.
Will the tagging works this past summer? Is that right?
Well, you can see, if you look at the tagging campaign, was it started on that week of July 28th?
Seven eighteen.
Or, seven eighteen, I'm sorry. You can see that, well, we don't have the, the, we had some numbers before we actually started tagging as well.
Right.
Remember, we did some counts a few nights before we started the tagging campaign.
And, and Mayor, if I may, Dave Elders, our Ocean Rescue Supervisor, is here this evening, and he's probably the best authority on how well it did or didn't work, being out there every day, and perhaps you could help with that question, Dave?
Good evening.
Welcome.
I, I think the first couple of numbers that we, we threw, we got when we were just kind of auditing, not making any actions, it was anywhere from 120 to 175, depending on the night, and depending on the, the weekly rental cycle. Obviously, new people coming, things accumulating, and then the numbers kind of waxing off or waning off towards the end of their, their week cycle. And as soon as we started tagging them, there was a, there was a fairly immediate reaction. People thought they were getting, they were in trouble, and we were just, we made it clear that it was an information campaign. The language that Mary provided us on the, the tags themselves was attached with a wire tie, a zip tie, and was very conditional, made it very clear that it was simply something we were trying to clean the beaches up, to make it more visually attractive. Items also, sometimes if they're left too long, they're perceived as, as obstacles or litter, and we went from there.
I think that the tricky thing from, from my perspective is, for a few of the complaints that I received were related to people that either had rented and spent a lot of money renting an oceanfront cottage, or someone that owns oceanfront property that comes, you know, and visits here. And both, in fact, these two entities that spoke to me described, you know, they walk out and there's tent city in the morning, and, you know, they really didn't have a place to go put their chair unless they would go way down the beach, not in front of their house that they had either owned or rented. Now, I do see, and like the success of this, I think that, you know, it was, it's a step in the right direction, for sure, and I think if it is effective, and you don't have to go to, you know, to, or, or an ordinance with, with, you know, stronger teeth behind it, that's great. It's just hard to tell, we're working with human compliance, and, you know, some people will, will read the note and heed it and understand that we're trying to do what's best for everyone, and, and others will say, well, they can't force me, and if we don't have an ordinance, they're right at this point, but that's kind of where the, the catch-22 is. I'm not opposed to, to starting the season and being prepared, not, you know, if, if we hear a number of complaints being compared to adopt something such as what Nag said, Duck already has something in place and they have for years.
Southern shores.
And southern shores. I wouldn't want, if we start getting another, or a lot of complaints, I wouldn't want to go through another season and not take action. I also, personal opinion, am of the mindset that if we adopt an ordinance, we make it effective immediately, not have an ordinance on the books and not enforce it, because I think that, that puts us in a little bit of an awkward position as well, of subjective of when you enforce an ordinance and when you don't. What do you guys think?
So do you want the ordinance now and not need it, or do you want to wait to see what happens next summer?
I'm fine waiting, because I, I wouldn't want to adopt an ordinance and not make it effective immediately.
Right.
I think once we do that, we need to be prepared to...
Right.
...to enforce it.
But we should maybe have one drawn up that we all like, so we just keep it in the back burner?
You can always plagiarize it, so...
Right.
That's pretty common, though, if you find one you like another town has, it's perfectly acceptable to use it, yeah. Does anybody know who does the, pick up the stuff that's left? Who would be doing it?
It's done by the...
It's, I was gonna, that's, Steve would be, it, it would go to the people, they drive down the beach, and when they pick up the, the trash from the cans, they also do that. The, the issue that is kind of one of the things that, that happens is if we get a big, if we get a blow, or if it's the end of the week, and the tent canopy hasn't survived very well, it may just decide to live there. And it, it takes a certain period of time for us to understand that it was abandoned, establish that it was abandoned, make sure that it, nobody's going, going to want it, and then remove it. So that's something that I work with my staff during the day, if something, it was in an area, especially if it's in, in more of a high-traffic area, and there's a skeleton without a canopy on it, but it's a canopy skeleton, we will tend to tag it, or maybe see if anybody knows anything about it, and it just, they tend to grow roots and are left out there for quite a long period of time, as you said, Madam Mayor.
What happens if, to the, if we consider it litter, by all definitions, what happens with it? I mean, I know the beach is toured in the morning, and for the cans and things like that, but...
It's disposed of as, as debris.
Okay. Would we hold it? Because I know Duck holds it. Okay.
That would, that would not be my recommendation.
Yeah, I wouldn't move up that either.
We'd have no way of knowing that a particular item belonged to a particular person.
Right. Okay.
It's, it's also, these things are not very hardy sometimes, and they don't collapse very well, and very often, that's the reason they're left out there in the first place. They've tried to collapse, the, the villagers have tried to collapse them, and they won't fold up any longer, so they just decide to leave it there. And if we try to do something like that, and they, that's, accusations are exchanged.
Good point.
Well, and the other thought I have, if we're moving in the direction of, of doing this as, as an awareness, keeping the tagging program, is we could use, this is an opportunity, some of our, John does exceptional work with creating awareness videos, and we could do a preseason video that we can get on the town's website, on our YouTube page, even show it on the government education channel, just as what our tagging system is and what we're doing for awareness, that why people shouldn't be leaving their items on the beach, start this before the season even starts, and hopefully, the message will carry forth. Versus, I mean, I, I think, you know, staff did an exceptional job in the middle of the season, coming up with this campaign last year, getting it on there, and we did see improvements. I mean, so that's great, and I think it's just a matter of, if we're going to go down this course, we start the season and just be prepared to respond as quickly as possible if it doesn't work.
After seeing how much stuff was out there, and how much you and your team had to deal with, I'm almost at the point where, let's go ahead and just pass it. Let's go ahead and put it forward.
I suppose.
As it's considered litter, if it's left out. I mean, why wait? Why, why spend the time on tags?
That's a good point.
And people are going to ignore it, because they know it's, doesn't mean anything.
Well, you're, you're still going to tag it.
That's fine.
You're going to tag it the first day.
The first day.
To make the person aware.
But now the tag has...
That it will be removed.
By KDH ordinance, it will be removed tomorrow if it's here.
Yes. And we can certainly bring an ordinance back to the board, to that effect, at the January meeting. We have a pretty full agenda for next month, so I would recommend to bring it back to you in January.
That's fine. And then it, I mean, then it's in place.
And you can discuss it as a full board, yeah.
Okay.
Is there consensus for that?
That'd be my recommendation.
So if there's something on the beach at seven o'clock at night, we, we tag it, and there's a code that says you're not allowed to do that, we, we leave it there, or we, or we take it?
We leave it one night.
One night, so then they come back in the morning and they see that.
And what I, what we had been doing this year, and it was part of, since there was no meat behind the tag, there was no, no action required. Some people were asking, why are you tagging it? And it was, that was, so that was a little bit of an interaction, but what we foresee is tagging them, and then going back the next cycle and informing them why it was tagged, asking them to indeed please comply. And it's the rare occasion that people are steadfast about, you know, holding on to something, and if that does then happen, it, it would be an easier thing. It's an easier interaction in the morning, because especially with, with sunset not happening until quite late in the day during the summer, we, we will, we tag them in the morning and not at night, because that's when the population is the very lowest. You get, you, rolling down the beach around seven or eight o'clock in the morning, people are just starting to come out, and whereas at eight or nine o'clock at night, it's still pretty alive out there, and a lot of these, these canopies are still fully inhabited.
So consensus to just bring a draft ordinance back to the January, bring it back at the January meeting?
Yeah.
And then we have all five of us here to consider it? Okay? Okay.
And then I, I agree with you that we wouldn't have a warning year, it would be...
We'd have to, we'd put it in place.
Yeah, that's adopted, and it's now enforced.
Right. Okay. Great. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Also, under beaches, and yeah, Dave may want to hang tight there. We have one other item dealing with beaches tonight. It's 2B, recommendation to amend Section 130.29, beach equipment to restrict commercial businesses and rental companies from storage on the dry sand area of the beach. And Debbie, can you just get a...
Sure, absolutely. We have a, have had a request from a vendor associated with an oceanfront hotel that wants to leave the equipment on the beach with a, a tarp. PAMA regulations would not allow any type of a stor, storage box, so yes, Commissioner Midget has a, has an example. We feel that the ordinance doesn't allow, but we feel that this language makes it absolutely clear that it does not allow, and would recommend adoption as presented.
Okay. And so the reference is to adding Section B, specific to what's underlined and bolded there?
Right.
Okay. All right. Open the floor for questions or discussion.
I don't see this as being much different than what we just talked about.
Yeah. It just, it just makes it very, very clear.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. No questions, or?
I'm pretty clear on it.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment as presented.
I'll second.
Comments or discussion? Others in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Last under new business is under appointments, the planning board. There's one appointment this evening. Eddie Valdivizio's term expires in December. He has expressed a desire to continue serving on the planning board. Is there a motion? Or discussion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Eddie Valdivizio to the planning board for another term.
I'll second that.
Comments or discussion? Others in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. And we see Eddie, thank him for continuing to serve with us and for us. Okay.
I want to add, as far as, there's a position still open on the community appearance committee, and we had appointed someone, and she wasn't able to, because of her work schedule, she wasn't able to make the meetings, which are at eight-thirty in the morning. So before the next, the next meeting of the CAC, I think it's December 11th, and our meeting is on the 8th, so by that meeting, I will have spoken to the people that are interested, and we'll have somebody to bring up for an appointment at that meeting. Is that all right? And then they'll have their new member for their meeting on the 11th.
Great. All right, we will move on now to Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner Midget?
Nothing today.
Anything?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Anybody gets a chance to look on our website, the beach nourishment videos that John Tyler made with Bill Pitt, they're very informative. One of them is about 29 minutes long, I watched that. And John, am I correct in saying that the others are like pieces of that sort of, more like condensed? Yeah, one, yeah.
Probably ask question in about two minutes.
Right. So there's some that are two or three minutes long that are, that maybe for most people would suffice, or you can watch the whole thing. I watched the whole thing, it was kind of interesting. It's very, very informative. And it, we actually got a couple of comments through email about people that had seen it, and were very thankful that they understood it a lot better now, so might want to check that out. The other thing I want to bring up is that the progress we're making on the disc golf course, what we're going to need to do before we go back there and start actually doing anything, we need to take care of several issues. There's some folks here in town that have offered to donate some money for the, to construct the course, a $15,000 donation, with the course to be named after their son, in memory of their son. We're going to need an agreement with them about accepting the money. And we're also going to need some agreements for sponsorships, because we plan on trying to solicit sponsorships for maybe things like the dog park, and maybe, it was discussed, maybe some of the golf holes, and whatever other opportunities we might have back there to help pay for it, or maybe pay for it almost in its entirety, at least in the original setup. And we're also going to need to figure out the, anybody that wants to volunteer to go back there and work, is, we've been hoping to do it with volunteers, and there's plenty of them that have expressed a desire to help. Steve's going to do a little research for us and figure out what we need to do on that in case some releases or something like that need to be signed. And we're also going to talk to Steve Albright, just to make sure that back there where the public works area is, that we're going to be able to segregate those areas without giving any disruption to what they have to do back there, because we'll be using that entrance there. We never heard back from the Bermuda Bay about using their access back there, so that probably doesn't sound like a possibility. And anyway, before we do anything back there, before we try to solicit any money or go back there and start cutting down non-native species and such, we're going to have to get these issues straightened out. And I'm pretty confident we can do that, and hopefully, get started on it right after the first of the year, or at least early spring. That's all I have on that.
Thank you. Thanks. It's good to continue to move forward. Sounds good. Okay, move on to the mayor's agenda. I just have really two items this evening. The first is, we just wrapped up here in the Outer Banks, the marathon, another incredibly successful marathon, actually a whole weekend of events between fun runs and 5Ks on Saturday, and then the marathon Sunday morning. Had the pleasure of volunteering out there for the tourism board with their station, and just phenomenal to see the runners and just the enthusiasm. But this event always amazes me, is how many people it brings together in the Outer Banks, and how many people it brings in. I mean, even today, the traffic down here, I think of people making it and stretching it to a long weekend, with tomorrow being Veterans Day. But I'm glad that, you know, we're a part of it, and I know with our police force and public safety, we are involved and playing a role here. But just thanks to everyone that helps out with that and supports that amazing event for the Outer Banks. The other item is just to remind everybody that there is a commemorative Veterans Day service here tomorrow at the monument, just off Collington Road, the entrance there, it's at 12:30 PM tomorrow. Welcome you to come out, it's open to, open to the public. So those are my items. With that, we'll move to the town manager's agenda.
Yes, ma'am, I have one item, it's not in your packet, but would like to ask permission for the board to surplus the 1986 Grumman Steel Elevated 102-foot platform. As you know, the town authorized the town manager to surplus property of less value than $5,000, and we feel that a minimum value for this would be $15,000, and we'd like to put it on Gov. deals at that, and we'd request your permission. By motion.
Okay. Am I willing to make a motion?
What was it again?
It's the, it's the fire truck, you know, we bought a new fire truck, and this is the old one, and we'd like to surplus it. And we'd surplus it on Gov. deals where we do our other equipment. I just don't have the authority to surplus something of this value.
I couldn't catch what it was exactly what it was.
I'm sorry, yes.
Is there a motion to surplus this piece of equipment?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the surplus of apparatus.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion or questions? Others in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, and that's all.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, town attorney's agenda?
I don't have anything for you tonight.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, we have four items on the consent agenda. The first is the minutes from the October 13th and the October 22nd, 2014 meeting. The second is to schedule public hearings with a local historical designation. Would ask that those two structures be scheduled for December the 8th at 5:30 PM. Third is the report of the purchase of two 2015 commercial side-loading refuse trucks, provided the board with this information, I think last week. Your approval of consent agenda would record that into the minutes. And then lastly, two budget amendments, one to record Drug Enforcement Task Force overtime grant, and second to record the Dare County Visitors Bureau grant for the fireworks, and would recommend approval of the consent agenda submitted.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Yep, so moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Others in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, short agenda this evening. This is the second time we're here before public comment opportunity. Again, this is a time to address the board on any item you wish to bring forth. Does anyone? Mike, welcome.
Michael Lowack, 106 Port Hole Court. Mine's pretty easy, listening to this far discussion and the five-foot unimproved easement in the residential zone. I would suggest that you all may want to add some additional provisions, because a lot of these houses in question are going to be older houses that may be in need of some serious remodeling. And once we hit the 50% threshold, we all know they have to come into today's code. And what I would like to see is maybe allow that homeowner to approach an adjacent homeowner to kind of split the easement, two and a half feet from each property, achieving the same goal, but not making it an entire five-foot easement that may come too close to an existing property. Just an observation from sitting here, listening to everything, and in the spirit of compromise, which I think we're all all about, that might be something added on to, just to give the people an extra avenue to comply. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else? Yeah, hey, Skip. Absolutely.
Skip Jones, 1508 Captain Slane, and I've been involved with a couple of these committees and whatnot, but first of all, the intent, I think, was when we said unimproved, was to make sure that the developer of the property knew that they were not going to be required to put in a concrete sidewalk or whatever, but at the same time, I think we were kind of hoping that possibly the town would have the ability to do it at some point if they desired to. Generally, it's not going to affect residential properties, because they've already got a 10 or 12, 15-foot setback. It's basically for the commercial properties, and the prime example is Surf Club. I mean, I think they couldn't have done a better job as far as the look to that property. However, I think everybody looks at it and goes, "Oh, my God," you know, it's a little much. And a couple of committees I've been on, one of my big pushes has been to try to allow the motels or condos go up a little bit, if they'll bring in the side setbacks, so that you do have sightlines to the ocean, increasing that area that you've actually, makes the ocean visible instead of being wall-to-wall building, whether it's commercial or residential. But generally, it's going to be commercial. So I think there's been a great deal, I think that's a great compromise. And one thing we didn't talk about tonight is where it started before it went to the point six. I mean, it was, if you put a point on it, it would have been, what, a point two or something originally? I mean, it took a huge leap at one time, and that's, I think that's what initiated this, was trying to make some sort of compromise that we all could live with, but still allow the developers to put in a fair-sized condo project, or, you know, the motel, or whatever. But anyway. And one other thing, real briefly, is talking about the driving on the road, on the beaches, I'm not, I don't think we've got a huge issue with that already. And I think once you do beach nourishment, it's going to be less of a problem, because the beaches can be much greater. But I kind of, I like the idea that Nag said, when you have to pay 25 bucks a year or something. If we try to discourage beach driving, I think you're going to have a town hall full of surfers and fishermen in here that you're probably not going to want to deal with. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Skip.
Thanks, Skip. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at public comment this evening? Sure, please.
But the marathon you've already addressed, but I also would like to thank the citizens and the businesses that donated to the dental clinic food that we can give out to the people in line, the needy people that hadn't had anything to eat, that realize how lucky we do have at Dade after seeing those lines. First day, I think we did around 430-some people in the clinic, I don't know the total that came up today, but the mayor might know, but I just want to thank the citizens and businesses that donated to that.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, Dana. Yeah, over the two-day clinic, we served over 660 patients and provided nearly a half million dollars in dental services between cleanings, extractions, fillings. Eighty-six people actually had lab work that was done with partials, and were able to, you know, have teeth replacements, and I guess those are partials. But anyway, so just amazing, amazing work. But it takes over 200 local volunteers to pull that off. Dentists from across the state came and volunteered, as well as local dentists. But countless businesses donated. I mean, we were able to feed people even when, you know, when we showed up at five in the morning, feed them a warm breakfast, and if they were still there at lunchtime, feed them lunch. And all of that was donated from our local businesses, restaurants, and shops and whatnot. So thank you for bringing that up. Another, it's just, Dare County never ceases to amaze me in the generosity and philanthropy of people, so we certainly have a great spirit. Anyone else? Would anyone else like to bring anything up this evening? Okay. Well, response to public comment, I think Skip touched on, Mike with the, this ordinance is specifically, I guess, talking about for multifamily or hotel developments versus your cottage, your residential. And Skip, thanks for the committees and all that you're sending, that you've been serving on, providing input, and I know also with the home builders, so it's good to have lots of feedback and input. Any other comments you guys wish to share?
Just a question, you mentioned that it was 10 to, is it 10 to 15 feet, depending on where it's at on there?
Generally, it does depend on how big a lot and all of this. Greg can probably respond. Are you talking about side guard setbacks for residential areas?
Because I have a question about that, and I wasn't sure about it.
He's correct in terms of the size of the lot would dictate the setbacks, but I think for most of the oceanfront blocks, they're 10 feet.
Right about one thing, that'll fill a room, the beach nourishment, or the beach driving.
Beach driving. That would definitely be a fun night.
There, I think, I think Jerry made a good point, though. And a lot of people might rethink the issue when they, when it comes time to be putting sand on the beach, and when it's, hopefully, it's going to be on schedule, and when it's done, and some people might have some differences, their opinion may differ then than it does now, about whether or not you should be out there doing that kind of stuff with a brand-new beach, so, but we'll see how it works out. We'll ask all this roomful of people when they get here.
Trying to encourage participation, right? Isn't that what we talked about last meeting? Maybe that's the night we do our pizza social.
Yeah, well, we didn't have to buy everybody pizza, just say beach driving was on the agenda, they'll be here, so.
Okay. Anything else that anyone has? Otherwise, we are in emotion, would be in order to adjourn.
Does anybody know what's going on with Eddie Goodrich Sewer Plant, as far as progress?
Did he pull?
I talked to Eddie today.
Okay.
And he had contacted the fabricator who's making those covers for him, to get him on the stick, because they put him off, and when he called me, he said that they had told him they would go ahead and start the process of getting those manufactured for him.
So he's going to get them done, right?
That's great. Yeah. And he thought that was a concern at the time, because it was a small order, and they were going to have to stop other work.
And that's what happened to him.
Got pushed to the side.
I'm glad he followed up. Okay. Motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, anything else? Others in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, brought you up for a really quick meeting. Have a great evening. Happy Veterans Day.